...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll open the meeting up to public comment. Okay, we'll close public comment. We'll move into, this evening we have some special presentations, and the first one will be ours, to the student of the month, so elementary school.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jennifer Uraca, and I am the system principal at Highland Elementary. I'm here on behalf of both Mr. Freer and I. Mr. Freer is ill, and is sweeping our office very nicely. He'll send us his apologies soon. So, I don't know if anybody's ever had the opportunity to really observe what happens at dismissal at the elementary school. It's quite an undertaking, and it's relatively new for me, I've been there three months now, but it is quite the monstrosity to see 800 kids move in a very timely, short amount of time, with transportation, with probably a dozen walkie-talkies, teachers, teaching assistants, and also with the help of our fifth grade students. One of our fifth grade students, Logan Ellison, if you can move up here, please, is our student of the month. And I've had an opportunity, in the last couple of months, just to observe the different things that go on at Highland and Highland Elementary. And one of the things that stood out to me was Logan. So, what happens is, fifth grade students get into an assigned kindergarten class, and they are responsible for bringing these students to their respective buses. And it's a very large undertaking in general, but to escort sometimes four-year-olds onto these big buses is a big deal. And Logan has done an incredible job, so much so that as you watch, there was one day when things went awry, and like the by-script of a parent at an amusement park, he had his two hands on both of his kindergarten students, and he was making sure they were getting to where they were going. He had the whole look that you get when you don't know where your kids are. And knowing that Freer is a parent, I saw him, and said, you know, they're in the right place, it's okay, you're doing a great job. And he just continued to do those things, and it's just a testament to his character. I know in speaking to Mrs. Cuzzolino, his fifth grade teacher, she spoke about how he takes the job very seriously, that he's an overall great kid. And after speaking to his mom on the phone and letting her know, I went down to speak to Logan. And, you know, he's appreciative of it, but when I told him why, his whole demeanor changed, and he just said, "I just love those kids." And it was a testament to maybe the perfect choice for the student of the month. So, congratulations, we have a discussion planned for our future education plans of being a teacher, we talked about that, but congratulations, Logan.
I will tell you, he's had some training, he's got some younger siblings.
Alicia, you want to come up? Let's stand right there. So, I asked our eighth grade teachers to nominate our student of the month this year, and immediately Alicia's name was raised. Alicia Moco is our student of the month. I'll read a couple of things that our teachers, some of our teachers said about her. Ms. Pacola, our Spanish teacher, "Alicia is above all things kind." There is a great place to start. "She has a heart that is full of compassion and empathy for others. She is artistic and passionate about everything she does, and always puts 100% effort into her commitments. Whether that be an assignment or in her relationships with friends, she's a critical thinker, and I know that she has the potential to move and shape our world in positive ways. I feel honored to have her as a student." Pretty great stuff. From Mr. Brenney, "Extremely well motivated to do well, the perfect example of what a quality person represents, kind and helpful to others. I feel lucky to have the honor to teach such a wonderful person." From Mr. Rizzo, "Alicia Moco is quite a young person, who is kind and caring, who is a kind and caring individual with an enormous heart. She truly appreciates learning, loves coming to school, and has a rare thirst for knowledge. My interaction with Alicia, oh, my favorite interaction with Alicia is the warm subtle smile she gives when, to let you know she has learned something new. Getting to know Alicia has reaffirmed a positive outlook I have that our students are capable of great things. I think I speak for the entire eighth grade when I say Alicia will have a positive impact on our future. We are very proud of her." And from Ms. Osborne, "Short and sweet, Alicia is a calm and determined student." Pretty fantastic. Oh, come on in. Come up again. Good evening, everyone. Highland High School Student of the Month for January 2019 is Nia Lawrence. Nia moved to Highland last year at the beginning of her junior year from Brooklyn, New York, and she quickly became a contributing member of our high school community. She was in last year's school play, and will be in this year's musical, The Little Mermaid. Nia is an active member of our GSA and interact clubs. Moreover, she swam on the Varsity Swim Team, and she swims for the new called Seahawks. Last summer, Nia was one of 12 teenagers from across the nation to be chosen to go on a 12-day expedition with the Montana Wilderness School. There she renewed, camped, hyped, all while honing and building her leadership skills. Nia's teachers describe her as exceptional, bright, caring, polite, determined, engaging, and dynamic. Ms. Petrasov says of Nia, quote, "She's playing the role of Ursula in our musical this year, and she's absolutely killing it." I can't wait to say it, by the way. Ms. Mizel says, every, quote, "Every day in, every day, Nia gets 110%." And Ms. Bozeman said, quote, "Nia puts forth 150% effort regardless of the task." They're not math teachers. They're usually social studies teachers, they're only 100%, but they say you give more. So, I'll take it. And Assistant Principal, Mr. Judge, said, commented, quote, "I know students are supposed to look up to us, but I look up to Nia." And he does, as I do. Everyone who was better would agree that we wish more of our students were like Nia Lawrence. Congratulations. Congratulations again to all of our students of the month, and you really, you know, serve as leaders to all of your peers. I know that you are all very diligent students, and probably have lots of homework to do. And we have a long meeting ahead of us, which you are more than welcome to attend. But this be the time, if you needed to leave, that would be perfectly acceptable. Congratulations. We have a special presentation for the high school. This is the boy. The boy, mind if I?
Sure, I'm sitting up, but I, I, um, tonight we have Shannon Ramirez with us. Shannon was a longtime special education teacher at the elementary school. Before last year with our members, we actually, as volunteers, Shannon volunteered to come up to the high school to help us out. And as soon as she got there, I tasked her with the big job of overhauling our instructional skills class. So, this is a 15-1 class that we provide for our special education students, and I really wanted to overhaul and kind of change what we were doing in that class, to catch up with some of the skills that we really want to see from our graduates from when they leave here, and provide them with a lot more of those skills, so when they enter the working world, or enter the college world, that they're a little bit better prepared. So, tonight she's going to be talking about kind of the changes that she's made to the curriculum, and what some of the great things that they are doing in this class.
Thank you. You can talk my job for me. So, I'm Shannon Ramirez, so I was going to say I moved to the high school, but I'm not going to talk about that. I have a quick presentation, I just want to sort of give you a little history. So, I was brought up last year to the high school to sort of teach instructional skills and do a little revamping. And with that, I realized I'd been out of college for a long time, so in order for me to affect it, and the workforce, or applying for a job, so in order for me to effectively teach students how to go to college, apply for college, enter the workforce, I needed to do something. So, I enrolled in graduate school in January 2018. I just completed my work-based learning certification last month, so I'm a certified work-based learning coordinator. And through that experience of going to grad school, I got so much information on how to help students transfer into their post-secondary lives, whether that's career or college. The district was kind enough to give me time over the summer to write a four-year curriculum. One of the things about this class is grades nine through 12. So, in theory, I could have the same student when they enter as a freshman, and then up until they were senior. So, it was really important not to be repetitive, and to make sure that we had four years of substance that we could give them. So, with that being said, I'm just going to give you a month-by-month overview of what we have done this year, and what I hope to do the rest of the year. If you want to interject at any point, please feel free, or you can ask questions at the end. I'm hoping this works. No. Okay, thank you, Mr. Boyd. So, part of what I did was develop a mission statement, which is posted in the room for the students, and that mission statement is, "The instructional skills class will help develop 21st century skills by providing students with opportunities to develop communication skills, critical thinking skills, creativity, and collaboration." So, that's how we introduced it, that's what they see every day. So, the class is structured into two ways, with the consideration that this is a class for special education students, it really is important to focus on their individualized education plan and their skills. The first part of the class is dedicated to a lesson that incorporates 21st century skills, while allowing students to make self-determinations and develop their self-management skills, to strengthen those transferable and employment skills. The second half of the class turns over more to individualized instruction, where I can work with the students on specific IEP goals, content area, work that they're struggling in, or I have, as you'll see in upcoming slide, I utilize Schoology, and I have a page developed where students can actually work on areas of high interest, keyboarding, I have podcasts from NPR loaded on there, coding, somebody introduced me to, what is it, Hour of Code? So, I loaded that, you'll find kids coding Minecraft stuff, it's great, excellent, so we'll see. So, this is what my Schoology page looks like when the students go in. We have some brain games, I have Read Theory, which is a reading program that they can use, interactive math games, they can read the newspaper, podcasts, so they have a choice here if they don't have any other work that they need, or IEP stuff that they need to be working on. Right, I'm not going to read everything, so if you just want to take a look, in September, it's pretty much the same as you would find in any classroom in September, setting up expectations and guidelines, reading benchmarks, math benchmarks, some team-building activities, and what I perceive to be the most important thing is goal-setting. So, if you come into my room, I am, I was an elementary teacher for a very long time, 16 years, so they're always very decorated, I didn't necessarily lose that part of my elementary lifestyle. So, each student, so it's a little hard to see, but there's a wall here, and every student had a goal. So, last year we did a book study with Eric Jensen, and he talked about students having a mission, and then the method. So, incorporating what we learned from the book study, each student sets a mission, which is their goal, they are allowed to make a determination, whether it's a short-term goal or a long-term goal, and then they have to talk about their method, the action in which they're going to get there. So, as this student here wants to learn to play the electric guitar, so I don't necessarily require it to be school-based, it just has to be a personal goal, because as you can read the quote, in life, as in football, you can't go very far if you don't know where the goalposts are. So, these are just physical reminders to the students that everybody has a goal in our class, and we're in school to help achieve this goal. All right, this, so, one of the things we did was to set up a teamwork activity, so here I just have a picture of students engaging in collaboration, communication, and critical thinking. They did, um, sorry, they did a, they did a Coast Guard activity, where they were given 15 items, and they had to sort them according to how the Coast Guard ranked them as per survival. So, it was a really cool activity that they had to sort of justify and explain their thinking, and work together, so that was really cool, they liked that. We all decided not many of us were surviving based on our knowledge of the ocean and what was needed. In October, we did a lot of career researching, we did career interest surveys, so students who have IEPs are required to have an updated career interest survey every year, so we incorporate that into class, so then we can help develop a more robust IEP. So, we had career interest surveys, and then from there, we did some career researching, so these are just different website examples. This year we focused on Career One Stop, students watched videos, they were able to see the skills, the education, the knowledge areas that they need, and we also matched activities to skills. We were all students once, we thought, why am I learning this, right? So, we kind of made that connection, from the content to the practical skills that you're going to use when you're outside of school in the classroom. That was October. This is just pictures of them engaging in their research on Career One Stop. These are some student examples, so they did actually have to turn their research into an essay. And what I really liked is students had to talk about the education requirements, so they're going into that knowing what that's going to look like. They talked about the knowledge areas, they talked about skills that they're learning in high school. So, this particular student here wants to be a preschool teacher, and she talks about having to have planning as a skill, she talks about, what else, is to be caring, and then this person wants to be a vet tech, and they talked about planning, you have to be able to plan, and they also talked about, what was it, it was, I read it today, now I forgot, you have to be able to monitor, so you have to have monitoring as a skill. So, it was really good for them to sort of see the end game for themselves. In November, students developed a New York State career plan, so New York State Department of Education has a career plan out. I, through my work as a work-based learning coordinator, have sort of revamped it. Students did that, and we did a resume, and we focused on 21st century skills. So, each student in my skills class has a resume and a New York State career plan. I don't know how familiar you are with this document, but when I pull it up, the students know it's CEDAS. So, I'll say CEDAS, they know what that is. Career Development and Occupational Studies, this is sort of what we go by in the class. It says here, universal foundation skills, we call them life skills in the class, this is what you need to be successful. So, when they're looking at their resume, and when we talk about skills that they need, they're pulling from here, so that we're giving them the language, they're not just sort of having to guess or make it up, as to what their strength, their particular strengths are. Which goes here, these are posted in my room, I should go through these, these are chart papers that are posted in my room. I had a student today, fingers crossed, she had a live interview at Mount St. Mary, and we were practicing her interviewing for that college interview today, and the great thing was, somebody walked into my room yesterday, it was another colleague, and the student was just staring at the wall, sort of visualizing, okay, what am I good at, what can I, how can I promote myself to Mount St. Mary? So, these just live on the wall, and students are able to see them on a daily basis. And this is just employment skills, a lot of this is based off of the New York State Employability Profile. In December, as we know, Regents Week is coming upon us, so I take December as my opportunity to work with students on their text analysis skills, that's part of the New York State English Regents. So, this year we watched Life of Pi, you can see that's Cars, but I have some students that are there every other day, so they wouldn't have had access to the full movie, so they were allowed to develop a project based on a movie that they, of their choice. So, students had to choose from five different projects that they could complete, and they had to analyze some of the text literary elements. A student chose to do symbolism from Cars. And then, when we did Life of Pi, the students were able to, this person, if you saw the movie or the book, analyzed orange juice, the orangutan, and then they talked about Pi as a character, so just some, these are actual student samples of work. January, so now we're into what we are about to finish. So, right now, a big push last year was to have student voice in their IEP. So, I developed with the assistance of some of my colleagues, a student questionnaire for IEP development. So, students are making self-determinations on this questionnaire, and they're sort of telling us what their strengths are, what they need help in. One of the questions is, when it's, you know, what makes you nervous sitting in a classroom? You know, when a teacher calls on you, when you're asked to take notes, and they have just a checklist, and they go through and they circle those things. So, then when the special education teachers writing the IEP were really able to say, Shannon feels that, or Shannon noted that, so that it's not just me guessing, it's really us knowing what the student has told us. So, we just finished that. Another thing we just finished, and Ms. Brooks has been amazing in helping me, last year we developed Common Assessments for our students in special education, to get some levels, reading language, and math information, which we can put on the IEP. And Karen is great in doing error analysis for us, question by question, student by student, so now teachers will have that to incorporate into their present levels of performance. We're doing updated benchmarks for the purpose of IEP. But the other thing that we focused on last week was disability awareness and disclosure. So, you can see there's eight units, so two units a year, it's a four-year curriculum. And we focused on Unit Two and Three, we talked about what, what is disclosure, so we identified some vocabulary, and then we talked about weighing the advantages and disadvantages of disability disclosure, when you would, when you wouldn't. And we actually did, we played Kahoot, if you know what that is, with famous people, or people in pop culture who have disabilities, so the students were able to see that a disability really shouldn't prevent you from moving forward in life. And now we're going on to what I hope to do. So, all of that was stuff I've done. February is going to be what's called a virtual classroom. So, over the next four years, students will get information and basic skills that's going to start after Regents Week, job skills, work ethics, and network skills. Basic skills are listening, handwriting, taking notes, taking a message on the phone would be something that we're going to do, so this is just an example of what the lesson, this is actually on what it means to be actively listening and engaged, and that's just a sample of a lesson that I'll be teaching. All right, in March, this is what I hope to do, Skills to Pay the Bills is actually a U.S. Department of Education program that I actually learned about through my work-based learning program. One of, there's a whole curriculum on social media responsibility, that's what I'll be teaching in class for the first year. And then after that, they have lessons on attitude and professionalism, how to network and communicate, teamwork, problem-solving, and critical thinking, so that's the four-year sequence for March. And this is, sorry, this is the social media responsibility, so this is just, this is just a screenshot of some of the lessons, but like digital life, copyright and wrong, feeling on display, cyberbullying, so each lesson, everything is there right online, obviously I'll tweak it as I find necessary. And then this is another example from Skills to Pay the Bills, this is just on positive mental attitudes, so you can see that the lesson is all prepared for me, and then obviously I'll make adjustments. In April, my hope is to go over Microsoft Applications, I talked to a recent graduate, and I said, "What is the one thing you wish you learned in high school?", and he said, Excel. So, I need to learn Excel better too, but that was what he had said to me, and that really stuck with me, so I'm going to be reviewing Excel, budgeting web quests, I want students to understand what that means to have a budget, we'll be filling out job applications, which I actually will do with students as it comes up, I've had students apply for jobs this year, I'll review their application with them, I give them a rough draft one, and then I make corrections, and then they have to do their final one, and then money And then in May, really cool website, I have more actually, I have to do more, I got more in my second class of work-based learning, virtual internships, it's a really cool thing where students can research the job they want, and then they give them tasks to complete as if they were employed. So, developing PowerPoints, making brochures, writing proposals, completing Excel sheets, there's a plethora of stuff for them to do, so that will be May. And June, Castle Learning is a fantastic program that I use in my class to individualize our instructional work on specific deficit areas, IEP goals, but in June I will be obviously wrapping up. And then part of the June curriculum, my goal is to, all old Regents exams are on here, students can actually go through it, read it to them, it gives them hints, it tells them why the answer is what it is, so they'll be allowed to sort of work to prepare for their Regents exam. And then this last slide, I am almost done. This last slide, at the beginning of the year, we did a lot of work with, why are we in school, right? We talked about Malala, who fought fiercely for her education and almost paid with her life. So, I asked the students, what does education give us? And they gave them a piece of paper, and they just had to write one word. So, in the classroom, I created a word cloud that was on the board, so they could just, these are their words, I did not make any of these words. So, these are, I think, fantastic words that came from our students about the value of an education, so I sort of wanted to end with that, because, well, they don't always want to be here, and sometimes they give us a hard time, they really do understand the purpose of what education can do. That concludes my four-year instructional skills presentation. Does anyone have any questions about what I, I worked pretty fast, and you are free to come in and stop in any time, and see what we do.
Very excited.
Yes, I'm really excited. They are really receptive to it, some of the students who had it in the past, and my freshmen and sophomores don't really know any different, right, they've been with me, but my juniors and seniors were a little like, wait a second, what are you doing? But the feedback I've gotten from students has been really, really positive, and they definitely are seeing the value I've gotten this lesson. I think you walked in recently, and the student was actually talking to me, that was really fun what we did yesterday, and it was the checklist that we did for IEP development, and they're starting to really see the merit and the value of the class, so that makes me happy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Do you need a sign, or should I give you a shout?
I'll fix it, Shannon.
Oh, thank you.
Just a couple of comments. First, I want to thank Shannon, Shannon was a presentation that was awesome, I mean, really what we're doing for the special needs students is unbelievable. I guess the question that dovetailed that would be to our principals, and I hear this quite often, I saw what Shannon did up there with teaching life skills. Are we teaching life skills for the general ed population? I mean, we had interview skills, money management skills, phone skills, are we, are we bringing that out into the general ed population?
So I think Mr. Zimmer is going to default to me. I, I had actually asked him what to do if you asked me this question. I actually just wrote a proposal that I submitted to Mr. Zimmer and Mr. Judge about making it an elective in the high school for general education students.
Excellent.
And we'll look into it next year. And in the middle school, we do those basic things. Career cruising is something we use in our Home and Careers classroom. And we do other money management kind of things, introduce them to that. So it's kind of a, it would feed into that.
Good, thank you.
And I'm happy to share that with the proposal with you.
Anyone else?
I'm not rational, I answered questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, acceptance of the report. Being resolved for the education, under recommendation, the superintendent approved and acknowledged that we're doing the following reports. Our meeting minutes of December 4th, 2018, attendance and enrollment reports, period three and four, internal claims auditor report, October to December 2018, and our treasures report, November 2018, our general fund, November 2018, our school lunch fund, special aid fund, and capital fund. And then a motion, please. Motion by Ed, second by Camille. Discussion?
I just have a couple of questions, Lisa, I, I, the, my computer went to sleep. I had a question about one revenue item, I had never seen that before.
Thank you for your patience. I have my papers. I have my papers. So if you could please take one and pass it down.
It was a lottery, it was a line item for lottery, and I've just never seen it before.
What's that, BLT lottery?
Yes. So what it is, is, as you know, school districts have received lottery aid for several years. This is an additional funding source to pay our foundation aid. It's not an additional aid category. It's just another way for the state to make a payment to the school district. So.
So it's not the lottery?
Yes.
It is the video.
Proceeds from the lottery.
Gaming terminals. And it, it, what it does is it provides a share of video lottery terminal proceeds.
Right, so we hit the lottery.
It's just an additional.
Because isn't there another revenue for other lottery?
Yes, there's lottery aid, there's BLT, and then there's another one that will begin in the spring.
Keep them giving.
So it's not in addition to our foundation?
No.
It's a way of receiving our foundation aid.
It's like a different checkbook from the state.
And the other question was, we had an unencumbered of three million. It's just, I'm not used to seeing so much money in unencumbered. We've had scary years where unencumbered money wasn't that high.
Well, I am taking the opportunity, you know, that was, the report was from November. This is now my three and a half, four month, month number four. So you will see that number go down considerably. There were items that weren't encumbered. The encumbrances should be increased, should be decreased. So, you know, every month, I continue to refine that. We will see that go down. It is not active.
Okay, so some steps got to be shifted around.
Yes, step-by-step.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, going back to the lottery money. If you remember back in the sixties when the lottery was first started, all the, all the revenue generated from the lottery can go straight to funding education. And the state realized they were making too much money, so they said, let's use some of this money off sale that are expenses. So our percentage to all the school bishop for education is very small based on what the lottery generates.
Really? See, I don't follow it, yeah, very small.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Pose. So Carrie, Principal's Report.
Okay, good evening. In addition to whatever you, just some of the items that Mr. Freer had shared with you. We had our winter concerts, and the students performed on Q92 with the guidance of Mrs. McCarthy, and she was interviewed, and she definitely put a shout out to the music boosters. So we're very appreciative of that. And something that she, he also noted was that, I guess in the past, he had now, is doing some kind of staggering of time so that folks can get into the auditorium, see their families, see their children, and enjoy it, and it was, that was some great success. We have a superintendent's conference day coming up, the 28th, and we will be having training done by Ulster Bosse's with the next generation science standards. The book room is up and running. We had a little bit of a slight technicality with some internet issues, but we're back to good. Kindergarten registration has started earlier than what I understand to be normal, and I believe we had handed out 52 packets so far. Some additional items that Mr. Freer wanted to note was we wanted to publicly thank the Clink program for donating $1,500. If you're not familiar with the Clink program, it's through Hanafords, it's a recycling option. And in reviewing their, how it works, it's bag it, tag it, and drop it. So they, you can purchase bags that are green, there's a code on it. You start to put the code sticker on, and any money that you return in that particular bag is then going into, for the Highland Elementary School. So $1,500, as well as a $500 grant from Mobile. And that will be used to offset some items in perhaps the backpack program and PDS. Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening again. Update you a little bit, sorry the report was late, first of all. Mr. Freer is out sick today, mine was last Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so. Very excited about the bike pro, the bike program network. I don't know if you've heard about this yet. We're getting donations of bicycles, and we're putting together a, working with a gentleman, Tom Polk from the New York Bike Coalition. He's going to teach safety, and then we, we're hoping to get up about, to about 40 bikes so that we can actually have kids learning how to ride, and then use the rail trail for some of that lifetime physical activity that we so need to teach our kids to be involved with. So I'm really excited about that. And we have everybody involved, I think the PTA is going to be able to donate some money to build a storage facility for the bikes. So, and teachers are going to help me build that storage facility, hopefully. So it's all coming together, and the Highland Rotary is involved as well. Some of that is to help us out with some purchasing helmets and bikes and things like that. So it's a very exciting endeavor. Yeah, any questions?
I have posed a question to, to the board, and I think maybe you have enough years in the district. Because old, old districts are declining in enrollment, and we are as well. And since you've started and to the point now, do you see, have you noticed any change? Do you have to change the way that you're doing things?
My first year, we were around 440, 450. Now we're 400, next year will be 430, I believe, with the, and what I've seen is one class about every three to four years that goes through that's much lower than other classes. We usually average 125 to 130. I haven't necessarily seen the overall drop in enrollment. I don't know, I haven't followed it that closely. Have I had to change things? Not necessarily because of enrollment, but we're constantly looking to revamp our master schedule and teaching to make it the most advantageous for students. We have, I think we were able to have a teacher move to the high school this year, a special ed teacher, because we had a lower enrollment in our special ed classes. But I think that may kick right back up again next year, so we have to really watch those kinds of things. Hey, hey?
Home and Career, you have a full home plan?
Absolutely, and there's lots of stuff going on in there. Cooking, all kinds of stuff going on in there now. And not only by students, there's chili bake-off sometimes, the chicken, all kinds of stuff. Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening again, I have two additions to the High School Principals' Report. Last month, Student of the Month, Angelica Silva, approached me right soon after the board meeting, and a few days after that, and she was concerned about disposable, single-use plastic that we have in the high school in the cafeteria. Absolutely, I agree with her. I said, she said, what can I do to help? I said, let me introduce you to Mrs. McCarthy, who's not here. So I introduced them, they met, I met with Angelica. Turns out, Angelica and Ms. McCarthy decided that beginning next Monday, after Regents Week, semester two, as a start, all the plastic straws, straws, which will still be available, but instead of them being out on the kiosk where all the, all the, all the condiments are, they'll be behind the register, so they're still accessible, but students have to ask for them now and be thoughtful about taking the plastic straws. So we're putting up signs starting tomorrow, so people will know that beginning the 29th of the month, that if you want a plastic straw, please ask the cashier when you're processing your payment. We're hoping that will minimize some of the, I, I do believe a lot of people take straws just out of habit, and who don't necessar, I, I still am one of them sometimes. I try to be mindful of it. So that's one of the efforts that we're putting forth. Also, Angelica is talking to Maria McCarthy about the possibility of getting washable utensils, so we don't have to throw out the plastic utensils. So that's being investigated, I don't see that being implemented anytime in the very near future, but we're looking, looking to do that, so I'll be updating you. Or I, I expect Ms. McCarthy will be doing that too. So that's one thing. Second addition I had is a Marlboro resident named John Penzella. Earlier today, he spoke to some of our students about the importance of good credit management. John is a national credit expert and travels all over the country conducting credit education sessions on behalf of major financial organizations. His book, Give Yourself Some Credit, A Graduate's Guide to Understanding and Establishing Good Credit, has been helping young adults learn about credit, including how to establish and manage their personal credit files with care. The book also highlights common mistakes many people make with their credit, ultimately costing a lot of unnecessary time, stress, and money, as many of us know. So Mr. Penzella gave two presentations today to roughly just under 100 students in some, a few economics classes and financial math classes. That was in the auditorium, Mr. Judge and I both attended them, and he did an excellent job. He donated several books to the library, and this is one of them, I thought it'd come and show. And I look forward to inviting him back in the future. Really good, really good response, positive response from our students about that. And very important information, I think we, most of us learn the hard way, going to college and getting a credit card and doing what we shouldn't have done, and then trying to get out of debt a little late in life. So we're hoping the kids, I'm going to start off on a better foot, or graduates. So I'm happy to report that. Any questions? Again, the library has several of these, if you want some, I can get a real copy for the borrow. Thank you.
Okay, Director's Reports, we have some of our Directors here, so if you have any questions regarding the Director's Reports, feel free to ask.
I sent an email, did you get it?
Oh, I probably didn't, yeah, I didn't check it this afternoon.
The first question was about.
Was it the vendor that caught the issue?
What happened was, we had a different company that was doing our fire suppression and fire extinguisher inspections. And during the course of the 2014 Capital Project, two of the GCs hired Gordon Fire from Highland to do the installations. So our vendor basically said, well, if you're going to use them, you don't need us. And they moved on. So in the process of doing our semi-annual inspections of our range hoods and fire suppression systems that we're supposed to do in the kitchens, the new vendor, Gordon Fire, was at the elementary school and in testing all the systems, found out that the gas valve was not hooked in correctly, and that has been corrected. The second question was about the doors in the high school, which has been kind of an ongoing saga. We're working through it. The GC for the high school, Doppel Construction, has basically turned over to us and with Pull and Bow on the Wings and Ashley McGraw to have another hardware, door and hardware company resolve the issues and backcharge Doppel for the work that's being done. So that the, it gets done properly and correctly and works the way it's supposed to work.
So we can rest easy that money isn't going into something that will ever be able to be used?
We haven't spent anything yet. We haven't spent.
Okay, that's great to hear. Okay, okay, I like that.
Anyone else? I've got two questions. Carol, with the technology plan, I guess I read in your report that the state re, not rejected, but asked you to rewrite the original.
Rewrite, so they sent it back for some, the budget piece was so nonspecific on what you needed to do, and they wanted me to work on it more. So I had to do that. And what I originally put on the website was a copy of the submittal, and they didn't allow that. They wanted a tech plan written up like in Word format, which did take me a while because I didn't do that the first time. So I did get it resubmitted, it's been resubmitted by the deadline, and hopefully they'll, my budget numbers are closer. So all those little action items and goals, they wanted dollar figures for, but they, they intertwined with other goals. So I tried to just be a little bit more streamlined in the numbers.
I'm hearing that from other districts too that we deal with, that they just keep turning it back and turning it back for those.
With no clear direction.
Just a stall tactic, states, delay, you know, the.
Hopefully, they'll be happy with it.
Spur of the money that voters back in 2014 voted for.
Right.
It's just amazing. And my other question, maybe I know Maria's not here, but Lisa, I know we're at 37% free to redo this lunch. What's the criteria for those families to apply that? I mean, what do they have to show us to qualify for the free to redo this lunch?
There is.
Formula or?
There is an income requirement, it's based on a federal guideline. I believe the packet is on our website. And most of the folks are direct certified, and now it's being expanded through social services. So I think the district very rare, rarely taps a family. The school nurse, the principals, the psychologist, social workers, they are able to make a self-determination on a family and apply for the family. So there's many, many ways that a family becomes eligible for free to redo this. It's all based on federal guidelines.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just have a question for Karen, I guess you might have gotten my email. I have, I have a, this kind of goes over my head, your reporting, and I apologize. But will we be able to see any result reporting from the analysis that you're doing?
Dan and I have been aligning the middle school, and we're pretty much, pretty much at the end of the year going to be aligned. And we'll be able to show you results by how our students do with the benchmarks.
Really good.
As well as opt-outs, and we'll be able to pull those kids out and then put them back in. And the way the benchmarks are aligned, you'll be able to see what our scores are and what they would have been with the students when they took the exams. If they took, if they decided to opt-in. That's our goal.
So we have a, this year will be our first year baseline.
And we're working diligently, updating and making the exams more rigorous. We're making them more appropriate for the age, like, for example. We're making them more appropriate for the age, like, for example, kindergarten, we've knocked it down to about 15 questions rather than 25. And we're looking at the end one right now, the fourth benchmark. Rather than 40 questions, we've decided exploration is more important for them than 40 questions. So, we're knocking that down to about 20. So, those are the types of things that we're doing, as well as putting rigor into it. More real-life situations, our end question, fourth and fifth grade are starting to put into their questions, the last question mimics the state exam in each of the four benchmarks. So, we've been doing a lot of work on this, it takes a lot of time, a lot of drilling down. I help them with the questions. I use what you call cognitive coaching when I deal with the teachers. It doesn't help for me to tell them what they have to do. I use a lot of question technique, coaching techniques that I've developed over the past 25 years for them to come to the realization and wanna make the change. Otherwise, it's not an effective piece. So, it's a real team, and it's a delicate dance that we go back and forth with. I meet with each grade level every Wednesday, it rotates through. And then if they need additional time with me, I book with them Thursdays or Fridays, like this week, Thursday, I'm going into second grade to work with them. Again, I've worked with them so far three times this month. So, and their teachers are very interested in doing it. K-8, they're doing a wonderful job, I'm also working with the high school as they need it. Is the state test perfect? No, but we're trying to align to it, and the rigor's there. So, I think at the end of the year, well towards the summer, you'll get a July, a good report from us, based on where we're at, and then when the results come out, August, September, we can align it too.
You'll be pretty confident in the correlation between the benchmarks, the benchmark results in the state?
Yeah, I'm pretty confident with that, going through with Dan, what we were talking about, the way we've aligned it. I've been mapping out standards now for five years, this is gonna be the sixth year. They have a pattern, New York State, for each grade level, ELA in math. And what I'm doing is going through the state blueprints and our blueprints, and we've been mapping them out in great detail, so I have a high confidence level.
You're seeing strong correlations between the...
Yeah, and the rigor, you know, certain grade levels needed a little bit more rigor, you know, some needed a little bit more, what we call testing vocabulary that the state likes to use. Our tests were good, we had to tweak them, that's all we had to do. And it's, like I said, a delicate dance going back and forth. It has me going in and out of the classrooms, watching the metacognition with the kids, and the way they're thinking and the way they question, because that's all takes part in how they're gonna answer questions on an assessment as well. Now, I view assessment design as a actual curriculum itself. It's very much like a sports curriculum, where certain things are introduced at certain ages and certain grade levels. So, that's one of the things that I tend to look at, and it's like an unwritten, hidden curriculum type piece of what's appropriate for a grade level. Thank you.
Anything else? And the last thing I forgot, kudos to our bus maintenance department for 100% passing of bus inspections. I mean, it's phenomenal, we've been 98, 99%. Kudos to those guys. All right. Approval Committee on Special Education Minutes. Be resolved, the Board of Education, everybody accepts the recommendation, Committee on Special Education according to the minutes. The CSE meetings of month, November 29th, 30th, along with month of December 4th, 10th, 11th, 17th, and 18th, 2018. CSE, the amendment agreement, no meetings, month of November 9th, 7th, November 7th, 9th, 14th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 30th, 2018, along with the month of December 6th, 12th, 14th, of 2018. The CSE, no meeting, no meeting, transfer in month, November 27th, 2018. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Tom. Discussion, Tom and Camille. Hold on, favor. Posed, so carry. Be resolved, the Board of Education, hereby accept the recommendation, Committee on Political Special Education, according to the minutes, CPSE meetings at December 5th, 7th, 12th, 19th, 2018, along with January 2nd of 2019. CPSE amendment, no meeting, January 2nd, 2019. CPSE, no meeting, transfer in. There are none to report. This committee authorizes the arrangements for sub-students, special education programs and services. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, second by Mike. Discussion? Hold on, favor.
Aye.
Posed, so carry. Personnel. Any objection? Do you want personnel of the block? A through G? And we will recognize as retired personnel, but who hired... Does anyone have any issues? Anything you want to take out of the block or stand alone, preservation? No, you take it as a block? Okay. Can I have a motion to take personnel of the block from A through G? Motion by Heather, second, by Camille. Any discussion?
I don't have a library.
What did she say? I think that that's a menace.
Mister President, I just wanted to recognize before we accept with certainly with regret, but we wish luck to our retirees, the people for retirement. So, Lisa Thriller, art teacher here at high school, been here for 24 years. June Rossi, has been a special education teacher at elementary school for 24 and a half years. And Patricia Miller, who I know is gonna be very busy as a new grandma, she's been here 22 years as a TA at the elementary school. So, congratulations to all those retirees. We wish them some, as we thank them for their service to the children of Highland.
Okay. With that being said, I'll entertain the motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
Posed, so carry.
With our due attention.
To our retirees and our new hires. Okay. Oh, now we go to our student rep.
Yes, so, I feel like I've been out of school more than I've been in school for the month of December, because we've had all those breaks and everything. So, on December 14th, Interact went into town and did the light-up the hamlet event, and that is something that every Interact student looks forward to. I've been at all four years of my high school career, and I'm totally going to miss it next year. And I was talking with Carly Relie, and she goes, you know, she goes, "It won't be the same." She goes, "We'll be home from break, and of course, we'll come and visit and like, go to the event." But she goes, "It will be different that we're not running it, and we're not seeing all of those expressions on the little kids' faces when they talk to Santa Claus, and they give them their long list, or sometimes very short list, depending on the item." And it's just something that every Interact student fights to get into. There's kids that we try and push the Halloween and the hamlet, and they're like, "No, I really wanna do the light-up the hamlet." I'm like, "Well, you can do both events, like, we're not, we're not limiting you." So, that's one that kids remember from when they're a little, well, when they were younger, and they see their younger siblings go, and they're like, "Wow, that's a really great experience," and then they wanna help out. So, that's definitely a huge part of every kid that's at Interact. And I feel like most of the school, like, most of the kids, we have 152 kids on our mind. So, that's a pretty great percentage of the high school. So, we are branching out, I had a few kids this week come and say, "Hey, I heard about your event. Is it okay if I come and join your club, is it too late?" And I'm like, "Of course not, like, come on, like, let's go, we can do this." So, I can say, I'm huge on this, because I love Interact, and it's just near and dear to my heart. But, last year I had the honor of going to the district luncheon that they have, and we are one of the larger Interact groups in the county, which is insane compared to like how many other schools, like Arlington, how large their class is and how like small our classes are. So, it's great, I'd love to see Highland succeeding in that.
We gotta get this in the paper.
It's great, I love it. So, I'll get you updated numbers in the spring, because I'll be going again, hopefully.
That's great.
So, then Fed Challenge and Molly UN teamed up, and they did a gift-grapping event in the high school, and it was to help raise money towards our traveling down to the city to present our forecast for the economy. So, we have enough money, we have enough money to pay for our trip down and our trip back, which is great, because we're a really small club, and Molly UN is going to use the money that they got. They can put, I think, like, half of what they're gonna be paying towards their trip to go to Boston, and that's really great for them, because they're a pretty small club too. We also want to congratulate Maddie Malharo on his 100th win, that's pretty big. A lot of kids have been talking about that throughout the high school, they saw it on the Twitter page, and they have another tournament for the league title tomorrow in Port Jervis.
Goes here versus Port Jervis.
Okay. So, and then, come, two students on December 1st went to see a showing of Chekhov's Uncle Vanya at Bard College, and kids had questions for the performers after the show, and Ms. Meyer set that up, and we've been working, we actually just did an interview with her dad yesterday in class, and that was really neat. We got to see, we're talking about different political actions that have been taken in time and the controversy over it. So, it's good that we have a classroom environment where we can talk about that, and it's at a pretty reasonable level, and her dad was involved in one when he was in college at University of Chicago. So, it was good to hear his point of view. And that's pretty much all that's been going on in high school.
What do you think sets us apart from other schools for having such a large Interact? What do you, what are we doing differently?
Well, how large is it? How many, like, on the average, how many kids are in the club?
Um, the smallest group that I've seen was a group of 15, and that's pretty small. And I don't recall what school that was from.
No, I mean, like Highland, how many, how many members of Interact do we have?
There's like 152.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so...
So, what do you think, what do you think this is?
Honestly, I think a lot of our teachers trying to get involved, I know Mr. Von Jovi was there at the event. And just like a whole bunch of teachers trying like promote students to like, get out and go do service opportunities, and I think that's really showing off. And then I think like, since colleges now require you to have, not just be an academically challenged student, but to be a student that's challenged in all other areas, either athletically or community service-based, I think that they have to expand out a little bit, and Interact and Rotary is a really great one. And you know what, I've seen it change a lot of students, so...
Right, there's a, they've really built an air of acceptance.
And you know what, our eighth graders that we have, there's the Husky helpers in the middle school, and like those kids are just like so excited to come up to the high school and just ready to like dive into those events, it's great.
Right, it's almost like a, yeah, that's a sports team, when you have a winning tradition, people wanna be a part of that, and, you know, and Interact does some of the great activities with the, you know, and the support they have from the Highland Rotary Club.
It's great.
It's just such a great connection with the community.
And I think the community overall, I think, you know, one of those benefits of being a small community is you really get the connection between students and the greater community.
As far as the Rotary in Highland, I honestly think there's not a thing that the Interact group couldn't ask for, that the Rotary wouldn't make enough of a disappointment. They're truly an amazing and generous group.
Okay, anything else for Caitlin?
Kristi.
I get that all the time.
Okay, what everybody's been waiting for, watch your time.
All right.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Welcome to budget season at Highland Central School District. Everybody is enthusiastic. So, this is just the first presentation to get your feet wet, get acclimated. Just a little history that I'm going to share with you, and we'll take it from there. Thank you. I always like to start off with a mission statement, and it was very nice to see that your last year budget presentation also included a mission statement. I'm going to read it, because this is why we're here. In a safe and caring learning environment, we aspire students to make connections, think critically, and become productive, global citizens, who create legacies that make our community proud. And really, the budget process is all about the kids. We're here for the kids, we're here for the students. So, what I do in the office would reflect what these folks want. I have to make that happen. So, that's my role in working with your district, to make sure that everybody has the, what they need to teach. Okay, so, I'm sure you folks have all heard about the tax cap. It's been about eight years already, and it has been tied to rent control. And I think this year, if anybody was a nerd like me today and watched the governor's address, did anybody watch the governor's address completely tonight? No, just me? Okay.
I watched the demolition of Bridge. Very similar.
Now that there are a Democratic governor, Democratic Assembly, and Democratic Senate, two men and one lady in a room, basically, we should see things happen quickly, and I think the tax cap is going to be uncoupled to rent control, because there were two very specific items he addressed in his presentation today at different points. He said we've got to do something about rent control, and then that, a little while later, he talked about making the 2% tax cap permanent. I'm going to talk about tax-based growth factors, payments and little taxes, pilots. Does everybody know what a pilot is? Okay. The allowable growth factor, that's the 2%, and the exclusion amounts, which are torque judgments, capital levy, ERS and PRS. All of this information equals the tax levy limit. It's a very, very specific formula that can go awry quickly. I know that this is very small on the screen, but you have it in front of you. This is directly from Open Book New York, it's New York State government. What this is, is six years of tax cap history specifically for Highland Central School District. So, on the far right, it starts out with the first year, 2013, and it goes to 2018. I did not include 2019 on this slide, it was just too much. So, you read this spreadsheet opposite, until you read it from here to here. Now you're going to, oh, jeez Louise, I'm sorry. You're reading from here this way. So, the very first number you're looking at is the 23 million tax levy. And then it will go through the allowable growth factor. What is the allowable growth factor? Does anybody know? That's the number that a state assigns to Highland, and it reflects the growth in assessed values. Okay, that's not a number that the district has any control over. That's a number that is provided to us from the state. Pilots, you can see, they have fluctuated through the years. It started off at 36.2, it went to a high of 74, and then it went down to 6,006.35. Currently, the district has two pilots, one for T-Bar and one for, it's a Route 9W, 2007 Route 9W project, and I'm guessing...
Probably right.
It might be, I'm not sure exactly what it is. So, the T-Bar will be ending in about two years, and the other pilot will end in about 10 years. So, I'll have further information if you need them. Let me go to pilots. So, then the capital levy, what's a capital levy? Um, let me go to pilots. So then the capital levy, what's the capital levy? Well, you know, we have debt service, which is principal and interest payments on our bonds. And also on any bond anticipation notes that we issue for buses. We take that number, we subtract any state aid, and we come up with a net number. That's the number that we can use as an exclusion, okay? Then it has the allowable levy growth factor, the two percent. It is not the true two, two percent, as you can see, one year it was one point zero one four six, one point zero one six two, et cetera, et cetera. It will be two percent this year. We received that information last week, okay? So all this information gets you to the total lax tax levy limit before exclusions, okay? Again, you compute the coming, the capital tax levy for the current year. You have a total exclusions, you come to the levy limit. Then you have to determine, does it meet the fifty percent plus one voter approval or the sixty percent? And it surprised me to see that one, two, three out of six years, the voters were required to do the sixty percent. That surprised me. Um, I don't know what the reasons were in the past six years, but um, there must, you must have felt the need
It was either that or cut program.
For that additional. Okay, so this is a very calculated, obviously, there are lots of numbers behind what you see here. I just wanted to educate you that it's not a two percent. It's not, you take your tax levy, multiply it by two percent. No, that's, that's not how you do it. There's lots of ins and outs. Okay, so that's a historical. Hopefully, at the next meeting, okay, um, in February twelfth, I'll be able to provide you with a projection as to where we're going with our tax caps. I like to do projections because I don't like to be surprised. I like to see steady revenues, expenditures, find out where we're going, all right? So as I said today, the governor um did a state of the state. Um, at the end of the month, he will release the executive budget proposal numbers. February twelfth, we have a board meeting. The next um budget information we're going to talk about are those state aid numbers. And what does, what, excuse me, what does our revenue look like for nineteen, twenty? I doubt if we'll see any growth in revenue. March first, I am required to submit the tax cap calculation to the Office of the State Comptroller. So this is a pretty heavy next month with a lot of calculations. And since I'm new to the district, um, I've been doing a lot of my own spreadsheets. I've been relying on our financial advisors. Um, I've been relying on a lot of the research that I have done previously. And I'm starting to feel more familiar and confident with my projections and where I see things going. So I just want heads up, go ahead, next one, next one. This is our budget calendar. Again, lots of work behind the scenes. I will continue to refine our numbers. And in February, you can expect state aid, revenues, and a tax cap calculation and projection, okay? That's what I want to leave you with. Yes, sir.
So what is that, under the twenty eighteen column? What does that two point nine represent exactly?
That was the increase in the tax levy from the twenty-six million to the twenty-six point eight, I think.
Hmm, I thought we were like at four percent, weren't we?
That, this isn't last year. Last, last, or, excuse me, the current year would be nineteen. Twenty nineteen, because this is, okay? So I think I started off by saying I just didn't have room on the page. This is what I could fit. When I come back in February, I'll show our twenty nineteen and I'll go forward. Okay?
Yep.
So for me, you're gonna hear a lot about long-range planning. Where are we going? What do our expenditures look like? So that also is um embedded in the budget process, okay?
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, moving on, that's a budget transfer under the operations. Be resolved, Board of Education upon recommendation, superintendent approves the following budget transfer as presented to the board at this meeting. Budget transfer number four-nine-six-six for ninety-six, ninety-seven thousand, six hundred. Budget transfer numbers five-seven-eight-two, five-nine-five-two, twenty-nine thousand, two-seventy-five. And budget transfer number five-nine-seven-three for two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, second by Tom. Discussion. All those in favor? Pose. So carry. Health and wel- welfare contract be resolved, Board of Education upon recommendation, superintendent approves the two thousand eighteen-nineteen health and welfare contract for two students at a cost of eight hundred and seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Per student for a total of one thousand, six fifteen fifty-four with the Wapinger Central School District. And authorizes the board president, district clerk to execute the contract. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mike, second. Camille, discussion? All over the favor? Pose. So carry. Change orders be resolved, that, day automation be resolved, Board of Education upon recommendation, superintendent approves the following day automation change order. PH one B, DC dash zero zero five, as follows. It's a credit for unused Cisco material of ten thousand, two sixteen, oh eight. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, second by Heather. Discussion. All over the favor?
Aye.
Pose. So carry. Castleman be resolved, the Board of Education upon recommendation, superintendent approves the following Castleman Electric Company change order PH one B dash three, point three dash EC dash zero zero one, as follows. That's a charge to our uh, Lisa, maybe you can explain that one.
Okay, this um was a little confusing to type up. It's a combination of a contingency and also a change to the contract. The net, the net difference between the contingency and the charge, the contract is the twelve thousand.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Yeah.
Second by Ed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Thank you very much.
So carry. Acceptance of donation and budget increase be resolved, Board of Education upon recommendation, superintendent accepts a donation in amount of one thousand dollars for the STEM grant. Be it further resolved, Board of Education upon recommendation, superintendent approves the budget increase of one thousand dollars as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second by Tom. Discussion.
This was a donation from IBM. Thank you very much.
All over the favor?
Aye.
Pose. So carry. Smart School Investment Plan Phase Two be resolved, Board of Education upon recommendation, superintendent approves the Smart School Investment Plan Phase Two as presented to the board at December fourth, I mean, Central School District Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, second.
Was there an attachment on our uh
Yes.
Yes.
Do your second, Tom. Any discussion?
This is reviewing what we had presented in December. We officially have to adopt it.
Okay. Questions? All over the favor?
Aye.
Pose. So carry.
Sarah.
All right. Happy New Year, everyone. There's a lot to talk about. Okay, um, one of the first things that I wanted to talk about is um the elementary school, you know, we've been doing uh curriculum presentations at almost every meeting. And so the elementary school would really like to show all of you the work that we are doing in reading, the phonics program, our readers workshop, as well as the writers workshop that we are starting. Um, in order to do that best, we would like to immerse you in the classroom a little bit. So we would, I would like to propose that we hold our February meeting at the elementary school. And um Joel has three teachers lined up who would like to have you in the classroom so they can teach you a little bit of a lesson about um, about phonics and reading and writing. Um, so if we do that, he did think that maybe if we started the, kind of that part of it at about six-thirty, so that we didn't keep our students a month and everything waiting. But uh, so I just want to make sure that's all right with everyone. So it's six-thirty at the elementary school um for the tour, tour. And then hopefully then start our normal meeting at seven o'clock. So if that's all right with anyone, everyone, we can
The meeting itself will be in the elementary school.
So the meeting will be in the elementary school, yes. I think normally we set up down at the So that was the first thing and, and I think with the teachers that he has lined up, it should be a great experience. You'll really get a feel for it. And I think even to see the literature rich environment that the teachers create in their classrooms is important too. Um, moving on to math, we are starting a pilot with our, I think Karen actually mentioned it in her report, with our AIS math at both the elementary school and the middle school, as well as our self-contained students at the elementary school. It's called ST Math. It's uh part of Mind Research Institute and it is an online um program that really emphasizes foundational skills. And I, you might have seen it, we've talked about it when I first started in this job. Um, we had looked at some presentations of it as well. Uh, it's, it's a little bit of a gamification of math skills, but the idea is to get this little penguin, Gigi, I think that's his name, um, to cross a screen. And in order to get him to cross the screen, you have to do these math problems. But the biggest thing is it doesn't just say um two plus two and then you pick one of four answers. Uh, it's really about the conceptual understanding of, you know, what is two and two and how do you put those together to make four? Um, there are no, there's no words involved, there's no reading involved. It's, it's a lot of trial and error as well, so that if you get the problem incorrect, instead of like many online programs, the correct answer coming up or things like that, you continue to try. And, and you start to look at, all right, how do I, how do I get this penguin across the, across a screen? Um, I, I think it will, our, our thought is that it will support, again, the foundational understanding in the Common Core math and the next generation math standards for New York State. Um, we're starting it small, just to, so teachers can see how user-friendly it is. It's, it's a cloud-based program, so it is pretty agnostic as far as whether we can use iPads or um laptops. So we're making sure that all of our classrooms are outfitted in those. Um, we really wanted to start with AIS math to, to support the work that they're doing there. Um, it will allow them to do a little bit of center-based so that, you know, one-on-one work as well as the work that's on the um, the iPads. There is, not only can the teachers monitor how students are doing, um, in fact, if a student has really struggled with a particular problem for a while, a red light will come up on the teacher's um, kind of like dashboard. And so the teacher can then go over and, and talk through this a little bit more. Um, but there are also, I believe, the parent part of it as well. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll get into that a little bit more as we become more familiar with the program. But I really would like to look at uh how this can support the, the, the skills that we're teaching in the regular math classes. And I think for self-contained, because we have students on, not that other regular classrooms don't, but on such a wide um scale or a wide spectrum of skills, this will allow for a little bit more differentiation. Um, and of course, we're hoping for engagement in math too, and, and really seeing those concepts in action uh rather than talking in the abstract, which we tend to do, especially as we move up in math skills. So we'll keep you posted on that. We're just getting that rolling. Uh, we had the, the representatives come and presented to Tom, Joel, Patrick, and I, I don't remember if you were there. Um, and then he came back in December and presented to our teachers to let them see what it was. Uh, the Mind Research Institute is pretty impressive. They've done a tremendous amount of work specifically on how the brain processes math. Uh, they're out of California, so the program is used more on the West Coast. They're just very moved to the East Coast. So, you know, I, it'll be, we'll, we'll be a little bit at the, the front edge in New York State. There's only a few schools in
So are there any regional schools that have ventured into this?
Um, Rondell Valley actually started using it a while back, again, when I first looked at it. Um, but other than that, many of them are Long Island. Um, there's not as much up this way. Uh, but he was meeting with, I believe, Arlington while he was here, so they're trying to move their way north. Uh, and I, I got good feedback from Rondell.
This was something that I'll introduce to at the superintendent's conference back in, in September, again, September. So we've been working to get him here for demonstration. I was pretty impressed with the program. So I got it wrong when I before he picked me, he called on me out of the blue.
It was a fifth grade question, I think.
It was a fifth grade. I guess I'm not smarter than a fifth grader.
And, and I think that's the thing, especially as adults, it's very disconcerting because there aren't any directions on that. It really is just, um, you know, kind of getting your hands dirty a little bit in math and looking how, and looking at how numbers or, or shapes or whatever it might be and work together.
So when we look at, like, let's say, the schools leading math in Elster County, is Rondell amongst the top three?
They're up there, yeah.
I, I can also tell you, I, we have the classes set up and it's gonna be pushed out tomorrow. I'm going out to meet with the teachers, give them their rosters. And I don't know if you saw my daughter come in here before. I've been using, I used her as a game pig tonight. And that was because she finished her grade level and wanted to move up to the next one. She loved it.
This is gonna be rolled out in which grades?
Um, it's gonna be, well, the special ed classes, Carrie.
Well, it's, it's our self, it's our self-contained.
It's first grade through fifth grade self-contained.
Yeah. Self-contained.
And then all the AIS.
And the AIS math.
As well as middle school. And it, I have to tell you, I, I'm just into first grade. I, we have probably have about seven hours on it that we've been playing. And um kindergarten, I was good up to the challenges. I didn't think I was gonna pass kindergarten. They, they really pushed the edge. I mean, they started doing transversals and um symmetry, which are things that are not done until like tenth grade.
How do we measure the success of the new program?
Well, we'll need to look at our benchmark assessments that we're working on and, and certainly looking at our um state assessments. You know, all of this plays in together. And, and this right now, you know, I'm really hoping for more suc, not more success, but to really help support our AIS math. Um, and, and looking at the numbers for that, as well as our self-contained, but um to
So percentages of level two spilling over into level three perhaps?
Right, or even low level two moving into higher, you know, whatever.
That growth is.
Yeah.
It gives a growth measure too. Again, it'll, it tells me how long I've been on it, what my sessions are. Um, it gives me a growth rate and how much I've improved from previous sessions, which I liked. Um, and, and I was making errors as well. I wanted to see
That's good for now. I'm sure there'll be more discussion.
Absolutely. I was just, we can also, once the teachers have used it a little while, we get some feedback from them because of course we're just listening to the people doing the presentations, talking a little bit to other schools, but talking a little bit to other schools, but until the teachers really, and the student, they see the students actually doing it, that'll be our best feedback. And so we'll plan to give you a little demonstration if things go well. So that's ST Math. I did want to give you a little bit of an update on our backpack program that is still going strong. I'm very proud to say that we have been able to maintain the program, for the most part, on our own for the last four or five months. We did, we did get, finally, the Methodist Church has gotten a connection to the food bank of the Hudson Valley. So now donations that are made to the back, monetary donations that are made to the backpack program can go a little bit further, because they're able to purchase food at the food bank at a highly reduced cost. It's five, it's like sixteen cents a pound or something, and then they go in and Dennis Desposito kind of does an inventory at the beginning of the week to see what we need, what we're low on. But we're still also getting supplements from our, from our schools and from the community. This is just a little thing that the Methodist Church made up, but on the backside of it, and I apologize, they didn't photocopy it so that you could turn it into a little pamphlet. But the backside of it, if you would like to make a monetary donation, or you know an organization that might like to do that, the information for that is there. It is tax deductible through the Methodist Church. But again, we're doing close to fifty backpacks every week. The majority of them go to the elementary and the middle school. We don't have as many high school students that are going to participate. And we're giving them two breakfasts, two lunches, three dinners, plus snacks and drinks every weekend. So, you know, it's interesting, when you walk into the room, you think, oh, there's a lot of food here. But then, once you fill fifty backpacks, you know, the shelves are almost bare every week when we're done. So it's definitely much needed. One of the things we're going to do this week, this is something that Lisa has suggested because they did the backpack program at Slaverdy's, we're going to send home a little survey for the parents to see, you know, what can, what's most used, obviously, what do they like the best, are there things we're sending that are not useful? You know, one of the things that I'm very aware of, because we're not individually packing a bag for each individual student, you know, we're not certain that they have the ability, for instance, to boil water to make pasta, even though we're sending pasta and sauce. So I think that'll be some good feedback for us to think about, okay, what are we sending for the students? But again, I'm very proud of the work that our, really, our teachers and support staff have done to support the program. Christine Sorbello is one of our bus drivers. She's been doing a lot with the stuff, the bus, but also, we're going to be doing kind of targeted drives. And every couple of weeks, we're going to look at what we're low on and ask people to bring in, for instance, these two weeks it was fruit or vegetable, individual serving things, and drink boxes, I think. And then we'll, you know, in the next two weeks, we'll look and see what we might be getting low on to try to target as much as we can. But, you know, the Methodist Church is being a great partner in this. We had a meeting, not two weeks ago, on Thursday, of just our committee, as well as all of, they all were there, are very enthusiastic about it. So I'm excited that we're continuing to move this forward. If anyone else has backpacks, we'll send it out there, too. Backpacks sitting around home that they're not using, we would definitely be happy to have more. Sometimes there's a little lag in sending them out and getting them back, so that'd be great. So that's the backpack. Right before the holiday break, December fourteenth, we had an event at the high school for our president's challenge students. That's our five students from the Ulster Community College Foundation that were sponsored through scholarships for the, they were chosen as eighth graders, and then they're supported through high school, and then will get free college tuition at Ulster Community College. We had the first kind of meet and greet that was actually held at the high school. Their families were invited, and then their sponsors were there as well. Ulster Community College did a little bit of a presentation for them, but also did some goal-setting activities and sharing among the sponsors and the families. I believe in February, they're going to be going up to Ulster Community College and getting their college ID and their library card and...
Sitting on a class.
Sitting on a class. The students are very excited about that part of the activity, to actually go there. And, I mean, really, the pride that was on their faces when I talked about being a college student was really great to see. Also want to give a thank you to Patty Stephens, who was there to help translate for a couple of families as well, so that everyone could feel like a part of the whole program. So that's exciting, that that's really up and running at this point. High Tech High, which I had discussed, a special development that we sent four teachers to in October, I think it was now. I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update. We had a pair of teachers working at the high school, and a pair of teachers working at the middle school. They're both continuing to work on the projects. The high school group is a twelfth-grade ELA with a self, an inclusion teacher in there, and they're just presenting their project now, and they really want to do an inquiry-based project for the second half of English twelve. And have brought in some past students to talk about inquiry kinds of work that they've done. But they are working on students finding a topic that's interesting to them to start looking at, but also adding a component of, not necessarily service, but how can it benefit not only the student, but also the community? So they're just in the beginning process of that. They went to visit PTEC, the Ulster County, or Ulster County PTEC on Friday, to meet with the teachers and talk to the students about the work that they're doing there. They said that was very beneficial, and so they're just, they're really getting started with that program now. Be interesting to see. This is, of course, the first year, so it's really thinking about, okay, what's our timeline? How do we keep students honest with their timeline, their internal timeline, and where they're going to go moving forward? At the middle school, it's a sixth grade team, and they're going to be hopefully getting together on January twenty-eighth, which is our next superintendent's conference day, to talk about a sixth grade project, a little bit like the eighth grade teachers had done, going a little bit different direction, they're sixth grade, a little bit, little start on inquiry-based learning. But, so both of those are moving forward, and we're getting work done on those. December seventh, which was a little bit ago now, was our last half-day superintendent's conference day. I think I shared the agenda with you. Fortunately, I wasn't here at the meeting, but it was a very successful day. A couple of highlights, we had a mental health presentation from NAMI, which was very well-received by staff in both the middle school and the high school. And this was, it was, it's called Ending the Silence. And so the idea behind it is to be able to talk about mental illness and how to help support students and families that have mental illness in their family somehow, not necessarily just students with mental illness, but who are dealing with it at home. So that was also part of the new regulations from New York State that we need to mandate, mandated training. And then we also had presentations from legal counsel, just on some updates like student privacy, discipline issues for the high school. That was also very well-received. A lot of information that very often we know but need a reminder about, or things that you think you kind of know how, or for teachers, but maybe aren't completely clear on what the, where the line is with privacy. You know, there's so many things, because we deal with people. Sometimes it's very difficult even to have those conversations about, no, I can't tell you about who Bill sits next to in my class and what they're like. You know, so it was very good, very well-received. And our elementary school continues to work on the ELA initiatives, the reading, writing, and phonics work. So it was, it was a very, very successful day, and we have another, now full day superintendent's conference day coming up in January. We have a Bosie's Content Specialist in Science who is going to be coming and working with our high school, sorry, our elementary school teachers all day, digging deeper into the New York State science learning standards. Part of that, we'll be doing some hands-on work with Phenomena, which is the kind of buzzword for inquiry in the science, but also starting to put together our scope and sequence. What are we going to be sure that we're doing at each grade level? And then what materials do we need to support that? So that's the work at the elementary school. The middle school is also working with a Bosie's specialist in, they're going to be looking at executive functioning with special education students. Dan is ironing out the details for that, but all, they're all middle school students, teachers will be working with that. And at the high school, we're going to be looking at five college-ready competencies. This is something that Mr. Judge heard about and learned about when he went to the College Board AP Conference this past summer. And so they're going to start looking at those. The great thing about these competencies is they're all of the skills that we've been talking about with the rollout of Common Core, with the new social studies standards, with the new science standards. And it's all really about how to help students think and question and analyze. So we're going to be doing some work with that for each grade level. And I think that's all that I...
That's a lot.
There was mine. And then there was holiday, and then there's... So any questions?
Yes, thank you, sir. So it's great, this is, as I mentioned, our backpack program, so, you know, just another great connection with the community. I spoke like last week with Jeremy, the manager of Hannaford's, right here in Highland, and Hannaford's and Wapakir Spalls have another grand reopening. So as part of that program, Hannaford's is donating twenty-five hundred dollars to Highland. So I will be, Karen and I will go there, that's on January twenty-fifth, Friday at ten a.m., we're going to receive the check and very likely put that money towards the backpack program. Yes, that's fantastic. We, similar to what we did with the parent-teacher conferences, to include in, up into the calendar, because we're going to do embedded down in the spring. So in meeting with the community, we're coming to agreement that on Tuesday, and we'll put this the first time I'm announcing, so we'll get it out to all the families by handouts with the students on the website, et cetera. So on Tuesday, February twenty-sixth, from five to eight p.m., so Tuesday, February twenty-sixth, five to eight p.m., we'll have middle school parent-teacher conferences. On Wednesday, February twenty-seventh, we, five to eight, we'll have high school. On Thursday, February twenty-eighth, we'll have elementary school, from five to eight. And then Friday, March first, was always a day with no students, and it was always parent-teacher conferences from eight to eleven, district-wide. So that's still going to stand. The only difference is now that the staff will be dismissed after the conferences. It was going to be some development that'd make up for them coming back at night. So again, we'll have three different nights for three different schools to accommodate parents and guardians who have children in more than one building. And then they'll still have the Friday morning of March first, also to meet with teachers. So there's no change to the calendar needed, because we're not changing any student time. I know it's later on in the agenda also, but just next week is the Ulster County School Board Association meeting, next Thursday night. I know few of us are going. That's the night where we meet with our representatives. It's always a good night. Dinner is served from six to six-thirty, and then we'll start the meeting. And just to repeat again, the concerts in the summer were fantastic. We did stagger some of the times, because we, you know, certainly I was unhappy with how crowded it was, especially the elementary concert, so we worked out with Dr. Rock and Joel. So we staggered, so we did not have an issue. We're going to do that also in the upcoming choral scholarship concert. If you're a pulse, it's in the gym. And for chorus, it's not a, the band, it works better because it's louder, but when you do the chorus in the gym, it just, the sound gets absorbed. So we're going to stagger the times and do it in the auditorium. So we'll have enough seating for everyone, and it will be more of a proper setting for chorus concert, and everyone will get a chance to see it. Tom Ritzenthaler, he will be at the February twelfth meeting also at the elementary school. Just to give us an update on, you know, where the next project. I did, thanks to Mr. Sereniglia, you know, I did, very impressive, I watched the demolition of the bridge. Thank you. I was kind of paying attention to it here and there, and it was right about the time...
It was the longest thirty seconds.
Then somebody, whose name will not be mentioned here publicly, came into office, distracted me, and when I turned, they blew up the bridge. But very interesting just to see that. So we're very excited. Our annual snowball event, you're the first ones to get the flyer, so we'll be sending this out to the entire faculty and staff and community tomorrow. So that will be on February twenty-third, six-thirty to eleven. It's the same price as last year, sixty dollars per person, four and sixty-five at the door. But the new, and the thing is very exciting, we are having our inaugural induction of the Highland Hall of Fame, Alumni Hall of Fame. And that evening, we'll be inducting Mr. Bragg, Dr. Kathy Magliado, and then the special award that we wanted to start, the Husky Pride Award. This is going to go to a faculty or staff member who's drawn a loving beyond for the kids, and this year, Lionel Heath was given that honor. So it'll be the same, you know, we want to kind of take what we, I always say, take what you do and make it better the next year. That's what's great about education, to get to do it all again the next year. So the snowball will be, it'll be what you've, if you've gone to it, the great event with the silent auction and the fundraising. And again, all that is for the projects that the Ed Foundation works on, which includes the President Town, which the Senator Memphis mentioned, and we will continue with the educational grants for student enrichment. But it'll be a great event. We'll have the Bragg family there, we'll have the Dr. Maggie Magliado's family, and certainly, Mr. Hugh, any of his family and friends will be there. So it'll be a great night. If you can make it, that would be fantastic. I know that we've had a lot of generous donations, of table sponsorships, so we'll be hitting you up for that also. Always a good time for the snowball. And that's all, sir. Oh, Hamilton, yes, that was a big one. You might have heard, we are auctioning off four tickets to Hamilton on Broadway. Not Hamilton, you know, this is the Hamilton. So the Highland Ed Foundation secured four orchestral tickets for a August first showing of Hamilton. The tickets have a, cost a thousand dollars, so these are real deal tickets, four tickets. They're all together, so not four. We are selling only two hundred total tickets. They're thirty dollars for one chance and fifty dollars for two. Going fast, we sold about a hundred already. And we just got the tickets yesterday. So if you want to get in on this, you got to be in it to win it. So for only thirty dollars or fifty, you'll have a chance to win something that's worth one thousand dollars and get to see a fantastic play, which is very difficult to get tickets to.
Yeah, and it's a phenomenal experience.
Yeah.
That's, that's...
Thanks for inviting me.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? All right, we'll move on to Board of Education, the new business, Ulster County School Board's meeting, Tom, as I mentioned, January twenty-fourth, six p.m. If you'd like to attend, please contact Tom or Lisa Simon here. Our Distinguished Friend of Education Award. Need to get some nominations in, so my suggestion would be is if you have a name that you're thinking of, email them to the superintendent, and then we can make a decision from that point on. Again, it can be within a school setting or... And again, it can be within the school setting or in the community that supports education. We'll keep that in mind. I'm not sure what the deadline is on that.
At least, do you have that? It's coming up soon, actually. We just, we just got the form. I think it's like, it might be before the next board meeting.
Normally, we...
Yeah, I have it, I can let you know by, you know, by the end of this meeting.
Okay.
Twenty-second.
Okay, thank you. You got it?
Okay, so it's a little, it's a little meet again, one more time.
Next Tuesday. No, February or next month?
February twenty-second.
Okay, and the Ms. Booth, two thousand nineteen Capitol Conference, February tenth and eleventh, meeting our FDP by the twenty-fifth of January. If you'd like to attend. And overall business, we have a first reading for our policy number seven five zero zero, dignity for all students. Have an opportunity to go through that. I mean, give everyone enough time, we can go second reading on the February meeting, and for, okay, at that point, we can adopt it. In the meantime, if you find any issues with it, email Sarah or Tom, and we can get it to our legal team and review it.
So just to give you an update, I mean, the reason we decided to look at it, other than the fact that it had been since two thousand twelve, they made, there's a little bit of more guidance on what should be in it. So we did send it to legal counsel. I included in the packet the legal counsel's reasoning for the changes that they made. A lot of it was cleaning up language and then being more inclusive and giving people more examples of what are examples of bullying and what aren't examples, more of what are examples of bullying, to try and make it more clear, because that's always the hardest thing, of course, for any parent, when they feel their child's been bullied, trying to explain to them when something is bullying versus when it's not. So the more clear this can be, the better.
Okay. And finally, Smart School, discussion phase two.
No, I think we covered that with the adoption.
Yeah, with their resolution.
And I think that was part of the...
Of the resolution that we took place.
Yeah.
Phase one. Where are we? We're progressing with phase one on the Smart School?
We have a, we have a meeting tomorrow to review the plan as has been put together with some of the revisions that have been made with different technology or different items that were changed out since it was submitted, so that we're all on the same page, so we can make sure that we know exactly what the scope and what is going to happen. We already know that there's a couple of issues with door hardware and things that we have to work out. So we'll know more tomorrow and see where we're at.
Are we confident enough that by September, we'll have most of that secure and decent place?
We're kind of looking at an aggressive schedule. It'll probably get us completed before June.
Yes.
We might not, we might not implement. We might not implement swipe cards and stuff before June, but we should be pretty much complete.
So we do all the...
Getting, getting, implementing the swipe cards. We talked originally, I don't have it locked down yet, and I don't know if they, they're going to give me a different schedule tomorrow, but we were looking at fourteen weeks.
Good. Anyone have any other questions on the Smart School plan? Either the plan of phase two or phase one. Okay, I'll open the meeting up. Anything for the Good and Welfare Initiative?
Just had a question. We were accessing a double convection oven months ago. What's the status of that piece of equipment?
Good question. I'll have to work on that for you.
Thank you for reminding us.
Anything else for the Good and Welfare Initiative? Okay, I'll open the floor up to public comment. No public comment. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Heather, second by Ed, and over to Taylor. Thank you, everyone.